The special meeting of the Cupertino.
Recording in progress.
Cupertino Planning Commission of April 29, 2024. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could do the roll call.
Commissioner Madipatla.
Me?
Yes. Commissioner Mistri.
Here.
Commissioner Scharf.
Present.
Vice Chair Linscong.
Here.
Chair Feng.
Here.
All present and accounted for, Chair.
Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from the last meeting. If you could all take a look from the April 9 meeting.
Yeah, I had a question. Should the minutes have more than saying just we asked questions and the staff answered them? I mean, should it include what those questions were? Or is that not appropriate?
I can take that chair if it's all right. Pugh Gosh Planning Manager. In terms of the minutes, these are action minutes because the meetings are recorded and available online for people to view if they have any interest in the items that were discussed.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Sure, I'll second it.
Great. Any discussion or corrections? Doesn't sound like it. Right, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously with one abstention. Commissioner Mistri.
So can you squawk? He wasn't there.
No, I abstained.
You didn't abstain? Okay. Sorry, everything said yes.
Yeah, I know.
Corrected it. Okay.
Great. You know, it's funny, I'm looking at the.
Yeah. I noticed that.
The minutes is missing our regular oral communication. The agenda is missing, yeah.
It's a special meeting. It's not required to have oral communications.
Really?
Yes.
Wow, okay. With that then, let's move to the public hearings. Our main event, our only event tonight, is item number two. It is, the subject is the sixth cycle housing element and associated general plan amendments. And what we'll be looking at tonight, the recommended action is that the Planning Commission adopt a draft resolution. Attachment A in the packet, recommended the city council adopt the proposed general plan amendments, including but not limited to Chapter Three, the land use and community character element, Chapter Four, Chapter Five, Appendix A, Appendix B, and Appendix G. And zoning amendments and environmental assessment.
We won't be doing the zoning amendments tonight.
Chair, that's just a reference to the name of Appendix G. We're not presenting the zoning tonight.
Oh, okay, yes. Yes, that's. Yeah, that's right. That's right. Very good. Well, so do we have a staff report?
Yeah, with that, thank you Chair for the introduction. My name is Ben Foo, Director of Community Element. With me tonight, we have Luke Connelly, Assistant Director, Pugh Gosh Planning Manager. They'll be presenting a pretty comprehensive presentation for you and for the public. And as you mentioned at the end, we'll have our recommended action for you, for the recommendation to the city council. So I will hand this off to Luke and Pugh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. We're going to have a presentation tonight on the housing element, which has obviously been many years in the making to get here. Before I get into that, I do want to note that in addition to us, we do have one of our consultants with Placeworks, Jacqueline Protsman-Ror is available on Zoom. She would be specifically available for any environmental related questions that may come up in the course of the presentation. I know typically presentations are fairly brief here, but we wanted to go into a little more detail on this, given the extent of the project and the amount of time that has been put in and significance for the city. So both Pugh and I will be going through the presentation tonight, which may look somewhat similar if you watch the city council meeting on the 16th or the Housing Commission last week. So our agenda for tonight is going to be broken down into these categories. We'll give you an overview of pretty much where we were three years ago on the housing element, what a housing element is, and what the next steps will be. We'll summarize our outreach that was done on this. We'll go through the regional housing needs allocation and the priority housing sites, which really form the backbone of the housing element. Then policies and strategies, followed by the Housing and Community Development's review and their comment, which is really the process of how we got where we were tonight, with our first housing element being submitted about 14 months ago. We'll touch on the environmental review process, which is a little unique for this project, and the associated general plan amendments that are part of the recommendation of the Planning Commission tonight, and wrap up with timeline and next steps. Okay, and some of this, if it seems really basic and rudimentary, I want to go through it anyway because there are people who this could be their first time watching the meeting or just would like a refresher. What is a housing element? A housing element is one of the required elements of the city's general plan. And unlike the general plan itself, which is typically a long-range planning document covering about 20 to 30 years, housing elements are required by state law to be updated every eight years. So they're frequently the most up-to-date component of a city's general plan. Why are we updating it at this time? 2023 to 2031 started what's called the sixth planning cycle. So we are a year behind where the typical certification date would be and already into that planning period. But we're doing it like every other city and county in the state because we're required to do so. The January 31, 2023 deadline passed, as I said, last year. So that was the goal as a certification date. The city was far from alone in not meeting that date. There are still, I believe, six jurisdictions in this county that don't have certified housing elements. About 35% of the Bay Area does not, and about 30% of Southern California does not. And they had started the process a year ahead of us. So it gives you an indication that this has been a fairly onerous task, just in terms of the amount of time spent. Who certifies is, if you're not aware already, is the California Department of Housing and Community Development, who we have been working pretty closely with, especially for the last year on this. This slide, I just want to summarize, I'm not going to read everything on it, but it breaks down really the contents of what's required to be in your housing element. So you have a housing needs assessment, an assessment of fair housing, identify constraints to housing development, and the two columns that are circled on your right, that's really your finished product of what your housing element is going to consist of. Your resources and sites inventory, which will identify the sites, their zoning, their housing capacity. You're required to address things like ADUs and mobile homes. And then your policies and programs, which tie in along with the sites. And you generally arrive at your policies and programs by reviewing what was in your previous housing element. That's our starting point, and that's a requirement of a housing element update. And then identifying what programs would be continuing from the prior housing element and which need to be modified or new policies created in order to meet your housing needs. There are other updates which are listed in the recommendation tonight, as well as zoning, which will be coming later. But you have conforming general plan changes to the land use appendices, the mobility element. And the goal of these is really doing what's necessary to adopt the housing element at this time. So we're not trying to go beyond the scope of adopting the housing element, but these other documents need to be consistent and allow for the housing element to go forward. As I said, the rezoning will be coming. We have not finalized the work on that. And one key thing to remember is until we actually rezone the priority housing sites, the HCD letter we received on April 10 saying that we comply with state law, that's not finalized. Rezoning has to occur because we're over a year late getting the housing element certified. So we sort of have a conditional approval letter, so to speak. We also have other requirements. The health and safety element needs to be updated. That will be coming hopefully later this summer. And any other things that are necessary to implement our housing programs. One other thing that will be coming before the Planning Commission, probably late summer or fall, are objective design standards, which are a somewhat new concept the last couple of years to cities as housing in particular has become much more of a ministerial and streamlined process. The discretionary standards that used to apply, things that had sort of the fuzzy language and design review that cities used to go through are now becoming much more quantifiable and objective. So we need to get our standards up to date and in sync with where the housing element is going. This has been one of the questions comparing this sixth cycle to the fifth cycle that people who are familiar with the housing element have kind of struggled with. Why has this taken so long? Why is it such a more complicated seeming process? So we try to put down the reasons here that if you're familiar, the fifth cycle, which just ended in 2023, the city had arena of just over 1,000 units. We're now looking at almost 4,600. So you went up fourfold for that time. And also, the city now, like most of the Bay Area, is built out. So you're now down to looking at sites that are already developed. This has really become an exercise in redeveloping your city and urbanizing it more than going into any type of greenfield development. The previous housing, the fifth cycle, also relied on only five sites to meet its arena. We now have identified 62 parcels, many of which are contiguous to each other. So it comes out to about 36 development sites. But as you can see, the total number of sites went up significantly as well in order to meet the arena. 70% of the 62 properties we've identified are at 50 units or acre or more. So very different from what was once a suburban community. This is getting to be much more urban in nature. The majority of these sites are along busy transportation corridors, which makes sense at that density. But it is a significant change. And most of the surrounding cities are really dealing with the same issues. We also have additional legislation and requirements in this cycle. So developing policies and programs became more specific, more quantifiable. You had to demonstrate that you could meet deadlines. It's not as open-ended as prior housing elements used to be. There's greater accountability also to produce housing. In the past, I think the housing element functioned really as a document you completed. It could sit on a shelf. You'd refer to it from time to time. Now what cities and counties are finding with HCD in particular is you've really entered into a contract to not only provide those sites and show that you can build the housing, but to try to work towards getting that housing built. So it is an ongoing process. You have an annual report that's submitted, which you're aware of. That tends to grow in nature each year, becomes more specific. It's become quite comprehensive, and I think we can expect more of these things. And also, if you had a chance to look at the housing element, you will notice some things have hard dates and commitments on the city's behalf. So overall, there's a greater accountability to produce housing. The site selection process had parameters in terms of the area of sites, sites not being constrained with environmental issues. It's all tailored towards trying to make sure that housing actually gets built. There's increasingly less discretion, as I said earlier. Housing is becoming more of a ministerial action than a discretionary one. We also had what's called affirmatively furthering fair housing, which I'll talk about a little more later. But that process essentially for Cupertino means that your housing element is more of a region-wide activity. You're having to reach out and address people's needs who may work here but don't live here. People who would like to be able to afford to live here but cannot, and people that have special needs. So that is a really key part of this as well. Hopefully, this slide's not really going to be terribly relevant to Cupertino anymore since we now know that HCD has found us in compliance. But I just did want to run through the slide. What happens if you are non-compliant? You can essentially lose local land use control, which builder's remedy has become probably the focal issue with that, that everybody is aware of. You also can have lawsuits and attorney fees, which actually happened to us. We were sued in February of last year. I believe on the same day, we turned in our first housing element for being non-compliant. That was settled in January of this year, which we'll also talk about later. But you know, it's a reality for Cupertino and a lot of other cities. It's not just a hypothetical. Ineligibility for grant funding is a reality. Other financial penalties and court-issued fines. Increasingly streamlined ministerial approval of projects. And for cities that I don't know that this has happened yet, but you can essentially end up in a state of receivership where a court is appointing an agent to bring your housing element into compliance. Again, I don't think this is going to be an issue for Cupertino. Affirmatively furthering fair housing was adopted through Assembly Bill 686 in 2018. And you can read the definition. What this really means, for Cupertino anyway, a lot of that sounds somewhat vague as a policy. But what for Cupertino it means is we have to make an effort to reach beyond our borders and to try to look at housing as a regional issue and create more opportunities within the city for people who live within the region, not just residents. One of the reasons for this is the city is designated as a high or highest resource area, meaning it's a place people want to live. You have resources. You have good schools. You have parks. You have those things people want. So based on that, housing that we provide anywhere in the city is, from a regional perspective, affirmatively furthering fair housing. That's probably one advantage is that anywhere we put housing, you're meeting that criteria because you are Cupertino. I've already touched on the city has to accommodate persons who don't currently reside here. And one thing to note too is that meeting our regional housing need allocation alone, showing that you can provide the housing numbers, that alone does not necessarily satisfy fair housing requirements. So we have things like our missing middle strategy, which we'll talk about more, that's intended to do just that. Okay, so move on to outreach. This complicated slide essentially shows where we were three years ago. It looks like I wasn't here, but the first study session started in April of '21. So I believe those were held before the Planning Commission and the city council. There were meetings further throughout 2021, largely orienting people on what this process was going to entail. I believe our first consultant was brought on around October of that year. And by early 2022, which is really when I came on board, we ramped up and had, I want to say about 25 public meetings that year, either before this commission, the city council, the Housing Commission, or community meetings. So 2022 was very intensive with meetings, significant amount of outreach. And we actually got a lot of information, which got us to this point, even though we didn't get a draft housing element out until early the next year. The first draft went out in February, as I said, and our first comments came back from HCD three months later in May. Our first draft, we knew admittedly at the time, was a fairly rough one. It was more of a working document that we wanted to get into the state so they could begin the review. And then largely after that, we got what in many ways I think was our second draft, but in many ways was our first in October. And from there, we had made significant progress over what we had submitted in February. Okay. Now we're going to revisit the sites inventory. The Planning Commission in 2022 actually addressed this topic through six meetings. So I know Commissioners Madipatla and Scharf would probably remember that. I think starting in January through July, we had the six meetings. This first slide here is just showing the nine-county ABAG arena, which is what Cupertino is, a member of ABAG. And you can see the housing needs for the nine-county area, a little over 440,000. Over half of those are targeting either very low through moderate income households, which that percentage is pretty much mirrored by Cupertino's own arena, which I think we have on the next slide. So this is the city's arena. We were looking at this table quite a bit a couple of years ago. 4,588 total units, over 56% of those would be affordable. And this is something, we now have the sites identified. We can not only meet this, but we're able to provide a buffer, which is something else we had talked about that is not a required piece of a housing element, but is a strongly recommended one to actually overshoot your arena capacity on the assumption that many sites may not get developed at all. Or as they develop, you may not be meeting your very low, low, and moderate income. So you want to make sure you have a buffer so you're able to hit those targets or better hit those targets for each of the income categories involved. And revisit one other topic too is the pipeline. For Cupertino, this was actually really significant. Your pipeline projects are things that were approved but not yet built. So when we started this, you had projects, namely the Valco project, that at the time was over 2,400 units. It's since even gone up more through project revisions. So Cupertino, of our 4,588 units in the arena, we have about 2,450 that are pipeline units. So over half of arena could be met through pipeline. We're getting a significant number of lower income, moderate income, and certainly a lot of above moderate income out of that. But this is one thing I would say Cupertino had an advantage over a lot of other cities is having such a large pipeline. One thing I can touch on is the Valco project, which, when we originally had submitted for this, the assumption was we were going to get credit for the whole project. We did not get credit for all of those units, as reflected in our housing element, because it's such a large phased project. It's unrealistic that the entire thing would be built out by 2031. So we probably got about two-thirds credit for that. And to go back again to 2022, to kind of look at where we were before we actually submitted anything to HCD. As I said, we had a number of robust discussions, many of which went late in the evening, and a lot of input received at community meetings to really see where the community was at in terms of site selection. We started out literally looking at every site that met HCD criteria, which was any site that was between a half acre and 10 acres. And the sites couldn't have any environmental hazards. The other thing we know HCD weighed heavily is if we had owner interest to develop a site. So we followed up, we did mass mailings, we'd follow up with other properties we thought were good targets to try to get owner interest. The majority of our sites by far have that, not all of them. And coming out of the meetings back in 2022, again, when we were formulating our first draft, the guidance of the Planning Commission and the city council, some of the takeaways we had in identifying sites were trying to disperse housing throughout the city, trying to get more sites, say, to the west and south. I think largely in reaction to the Valco project in the Hamptons, which had 3,000 units approved in the northeast portion of the city. And also to try to locate housing sites to counteract declining school enrollment. Now, that's going on everywhere. But that was also another thought I know this commission and the city council had expressed an interest in. Initially too, we had several sites where we had owner interest even for larger apartment projects to redevelop those. I believe the council and the commission both had expressed an interest in not displacing residents who also might be living in what were more affordable development than what would replace them. So as you'll see when we get to our sites too, we don't have that as an issue. Most of our sites are commercial properties along busier corridors or sites that are relatively undeveloped. We're not going to be displacing any significant number of residents. When we got our initial comments back in May of last year from HCD, I believe it was two months later in July, we went to the city council to give them an update on what the comments were looking like in terms of we had lost some of the pipeline units. Our consultant had also advised us that some of the sites we had, particularly some of the smaller ones, some of them on the west side, were not really going to be viable, and they weren't adding a lot of units. So we tried to come up with a strategy with what would make the most sense. And where we started is looking at a lot of the Assembly and Senate bills that were linking housing, land use, and transportation. So things like AB 32 and SB 375 that were adopted before 2010, Plan Bay Area 2050 and the Regional Transportation Plan. All of these were looking at intensification along corridors and specifically getting higher-density housing linked to transit. In July of last year also, there was Assembly Bill 2011. We've not had any projects come in under this bill. But what that bill allows is commercial properties, even without rezoning, if they're along major corridors, to actually develop housing projects without rezoning and not subject to CEQA. So you'd essentially have a ministerial approval if you meet the standards of that ordinance, or that statute, which has a number of conditions in terms of setbacks and minimum density. But what it really did is it told us you could have major corridors like Stevens Creek and Deans Boulevard add a lot of additional housing without even really going through the city process. So based on that and our land use planning documents, we wanted to look at what would be the site selection strategy, and that's the guidance we got from council at that time. So this relatively simple map, which hopefully is fairly clear. The black sites show the location of the 62 properties, which I think are reflected more as 36 development sites because you can't see all the property lines. These are the sites that are our priority housing sites. So I think you can see a lot of them are on South Deans Boulevard. Some are up on North Deans as you get near Stevens Creek. And between Stelling and Wolf, you have a number of properties along Stevens Creek as well, with one even being east of there that was added somewhat late to the process. There are also sites along Homestead, but you have a few remaining on the west side of the city. But you know, it's a fairly balanced dispersal of properties. And as I said, the majority of these, 70%, are in the 50-unit-per-acre range and up. Okay, and I just wanted to include this slide, which kind of summarizes the tables that are in Appendix B4 of the housing element itself. That's the appendix that has most of the site-related information. So in the first column, you can see the arena. The second column, what our pipeline capacity is, the 2,452. And then the next two columns are pretty much broken down the way the housing element itself is in Appendix B4, with we have sites that are really solely for residential development and other sites that are identified as mixed-use with residential. Those sites could be significantly residential as well. But there's a pretty close balance between the exclusively residential properties and the mixed-use properties. We've also accounted for what we would assume would be our accessory dwelling unit production between now and 2031, which we're assuming about 192 is what we're estimating. And all of those get you to a capacity of 6226. If you're doing the math at home, I think we did have, or was that corrected on here? No, never mind then. We had an error on this slide earlier. It's been corrected. So the 6226 figure is really our total capacity. So that's really your arena with the buffer. Okay, and with that, we are at programs and policies, and I am going to turn this over to Pugh to complete the rest of the presentation.
Good evening, Plan Commission. Thank you, Luke. So with regard to the programs and policies that are in the housing element, there are some requirements from state law in the areas in which we must adopt policies based on the different analyses that occurs as part of the housing element preparation. And to that end, we must provide policies and programs in each of these areas. Basically, there are seven big areas. There's programs to provide adequate housing sites, assist lower-income housing development, address housing constraints, programs to conserve, improve, and expand housing stock, programs to affirmatively further fair housing, preserve at-risk units, you know, units that are occupied by lower-income households that are at risk of converting to market-rate units essentially, and programs for ADUs and second units. And to that end, in the draft housing element, there are policies in each of these areas. With regard to programs that provide adequate housing sites, of course, we have identified enough sites to accommodate our city's arena, and that's in the housing element. Create new land use designations and zoning standards to make sure that the arena can be accommodated. Basically, it would be unfair to say that you can build 50 units per acre minimum, but you could only have a 30-foot height, for example, to use an example. So we've got to be realistic about what those standards are. Programs to assist lower-income housing development, whether that is supporting grant applications. The city would support those grant applications when they're made by affordable housing developers, providing technical support to affordable housing developers or anybody in general. or anybody in general that, that is proposing any housing. Issue a notice of funding availability for our BMR affordable housing funds, making sure that happens and that we can do anything in our capacity to make those funds available for housing development. Moving on to programs that address housing constraints. As part of the analysis, we looked, the consultants looked to the housing constraints that are in our community and in our, in our policies. And they basically identified that the city currently does not have objective standards, design standards as it relates to housing development to make the review of those housing developments more streamlined. And to that end, there is a program to require that the city adopt objective design standards. We would continue fee waivers for affordable units and hundred percent affordable projects. That is something that is on our books. Evaluate parking standards, that is something that HCD actually pushed on to make sure that our parking standards, which are slightly antiquated, are reviewed and evaluated. Programs to conserve, improve and expand the city's housing stock. Again, we would create that R four zoning district to accommodate those, the higher density developments. Promote options for multi-generational households and house sharing. That kind of came up through our outreach that we had done initially in two thousand twenty-two. There was a program that kind of was developed around that. We would also continue to disallow conversion of multifamily units to single-family residences because we did see quite a bit of loss in the number of units. Over time, you know, properties that we inherited from the county or annexed from the county had multiple units, but over time, those were developed with single-family residences rather than the duplex or fourplexes that they had at that time when we annexed them. Also to use our CDBG funds for conservation and improvements, that is something that we would continue to do. This one is a little bit of a newer concept, which is promoting affirmatively furthering fair housing. And that has received a lot of comment, we have received a lot of comments about the strategies and programs in this particular area. While affirmatively furthering fair housing, that's a mouthful, AFFH, doesn't necessarily, isn't necessarily required for purposes of RENA accommodation. It is really something that is being pushed by HCD to make sure that equity is considered in housing development across the city, not just in meeting RENA, but overall. And to that end, of course, we are upzoning sites to accommodate our RENA. We're certainly doing that. As Luke had mentioned, allowing housing anywhere in the city does regionally improve, you know, does affirmatively further fair housing. Also, supporting teacher housing and ELI projects. Those are families and households that tend to be in that moderate income category rather than the above mod category. Also continuing to support the development of ADUs, which has primarily been our main source of lower income housing stock traditionally. However, you know, the, basically, we have to go above and beyond, you know, state law to push for the development of ADUs. That is also being required by HCD. And then the concept of the missing middle, which is traditionally, post-war, we would have in neighborhoods, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes around the edges of the neighborhoods where they were accommodated as part of the neighborhood. And over time, we uniformly saw the development of single-family housing. And this is the concept that HCD is pushing for in looking at affirmatively furthering fair housing within the neighborhoods to make sure that there are housing choices of different kinds available throughout the city by proposing gentle and modest increases in density within the neighborhoods. And this was, this is, I put the number of the strategy in here. It is HE Strategy one-three-six in the draft housing element. And with that, I did want to mention there have been questions about this particular strategy and how we are upzoning corner lots and properties that are but commercial properties to allow duplexes. I did want to reiterate that we're not necessarily rezoning those properties. We are allowing duplex development on those properties as an alternative to the single-family residences that are there. And we would allow up to a maximum of four units on those sites because on any duplex lot currently in the city, with recent changes to our ADU ordinance, you are allowed to have four units on those duplex lots. And also on our R one properties, you are allowed to have one single-family primary residence with three ADUs. So we would still cap out at four units on properties that are subject to this particular strategy. Moving on, programs to preserve at-risk units. This is a slightly more esoteric concept. This is basically to meet with affordable housing operators that operate properties that are at risk of conversion. We do identify which properties are at risk of converting. We want to make sure that we meet with them and know ahead of time whether they are considering converting to market rate housing or not. And, you know, trying to come up with strategies of how to maybe entice them or, you know, pull in another operator that would want to continue that kind of service for those units. In terms of programs for ADUs and second units, we would continue to offer streamlined, pre-approved ADUs. We were among, one of the first in our county to offer master-planned ADUs, so that master-permitted ADUs, so that they would be a menu of ADUs that one could pick from and we could point you in the right direction as long as you met certain criteria. You could pick up these off-the-shelf plans and acquire them and put them down on your property. So we will continue to offer that and we'll look for ways to expand and streamline that process moving forward. We'd also evaluate and participate in local and regional programs and efforts for additional ADUs and how regionally there are efforts to create a library of ADUs that people can purchase plans from and basically plonk them on their property just to make that process a little bit more streamlined and efficient. Moving on to HCD review and comments. Like Luke mentioned, our first draft of HCD was submitted in February of two thousand twenty-three. Admittedly, it was a very rough first draft and, which was evident in the, the multiple-page letter that we received from HCD. In fact, they did not even comment on our sites inventory at that time. They basically had a blanket statement about, around it. So essentially, when we submitted our second draft to HCD, a lot of that was basically rewritten. And so, which resulted in a much shorter letter from them the second time around. And then in February of this year, we submitted our third draft to HCD and we were pleasantly surprised that we got our conditional letter from HCD on April tenth. So between our first real draft to getting our compliance letter, it took about six months to get there. Again, as I mentioned, the second draft, which was submitted in October and November, was a substantial rewrite of the first draft based on HCD's comments from May. All of the analysis was pretty much revised in the second draft. We had, the review of the prior housing element was updated. There was much more information incorporated into the second draft. The fair housing analysis was also updated, needs and constraints analysis, all of the analysis was updated. In addition, the sites inventory was updated based on council direction, our consultant's advice. The way the information was presented was also redone. So at the end of the chapter, you'll find there's a whole bunch of red lines in it. It's, like I said, it was essentially a rewrite of that chapter, that appendix as well. Existing policies and strategies were revised. Basically, some, we, we are continuing some of the existing policies and strategies from the fifth element housing cycle, housing element cycle, but they had to be updated, whether it was to address state law or to address HCD's requests for additional information, including adding specific deadlines, specific goals and targets that we have to meet, all of which had to be complied with and to HCD specifications. Also, new policies and strategies were added in the first, that were added in the first draft were revised based on HCD's input and based on our consultant's experience in having prepared these housing elements in this round of the planning period. Or they were replaced altogether based on the input that we see from HCD and from our consultant. Let's see. So moving on to our third draft, there were actually fewer edits with our draft because they were targeted edits based on HCD's comment letter, which was fairly short. And they were really related to the sites and sites inventory. They wanted additional information and justification for the sites. In fact, by the end of this process, they actually disallowed one site, which unfortunately ended up in the draft resolution. So as part of your motion, I will request that one particular site be dropped. It is not part of our RENA and not part of our RENA count. So I will point that out, I will point out which site that is. And then there were refinements to the missing middle strategy as a result of their comments because they wanted additional information and descriptions around what missing middle is and what can you, what can be allowed. So they were very specific about what they wanted to see in this draft. And I'll move on to the environmental assessment. This is, also has been a subject of discussion. As Luke mentioned, in February of two thousand twenty-three, we, the city was sued by the California Housing Defense Fund and YMB law for being non-compliant on our obligations for having a certified housing element by the deadline. And as a result of that lawsuit, finally in January two thousand twenty-four, that lawsuit was settled with, and a stipulated judgment was entered into. One of the stipulations of that was that it established a schedule to complete our housing element update in compliance with state law. Essentially, it forced us into this fast track of review by HCD and a fast track of us providing documents to HCD in order to get a compliant housing element on a streamlined path. And as part of that, state law essentially under Government Code Section six-five-seven-five-nine A basically says that CEQA really does not apply to actions to bring a housing element into compliance with the court order. And because we'd been sued and there was a stipulated judgment, this particular provision of the state law applies to our housing element and the actions that the Planning Commission, the City Council will take to adopt the housing element. However, we still did an environmental assessment and there, we had to prepare an environmental assessment, which has to be incorporated into our general plan as an appendix, which is Appendix G, part of your recommended actions tonight. And all these topics that would ordinarily be evaluated in a draft EIR were evaluated in this environmental assessment. Essentially, any significant environmental impacts are avoided, minimized, rectified, reduced or eliminated and/or compensated. That's the, it's a mouthful again. And then the general plan incorporates policies and strategies which protect, preserve and enhance our environmental resources. So the general plan already has a framework that protects our resources based on environmental review in the past. As background, I did want to say that our, our current environmental assessment, the one that is being incorporated into the general plan, is based on the two thousand fifteen general plan EIR. And that identified mitigation measures in air quality, biological resources, hazardous materials, transportation, utilities and services systems. And what occurred in two thousand nineteen, I believe, is that the city actually adopted a municipal code ordinance. Basically, we adopted into our code standard environmental protection requirements because a lot of, lot of projects were becoming ministerial and so council wanted to make sure that we were able to apply our environment standard, protection standards to these ministerial projects. And we've basically amended our municipal code to require these mitigation measures that were identified in the two thousand fifteen general plan EIR as requirements in all construction projects. So it's just as conditions of approval or as requirements of issuance of your building permit, you just have to do X, Y, Z. You have to incorporate those into your construction practices. And then in addition to that, we've amended our, our general plan policies. So we've updated some policies and strategies to reflect current best practices and to ensure that future, potential future development will continue to reduce impacts from construction. So one example of that is the update to the mobility element, which the Planning Commission is being asked to act on tonight. And those are limited again to the scope of what our housing element is and the, the recommendations that in the draft is basically based on the stuff that our consultants are saying would be adequate to push our envelope further and to reduce impacts. The environmental assessment did though find significant and unavoidable impacts in air quality, GAG and transportation. So however, it should be noted that the environmental assessment that has been prepared is a program level document. It is not a project level document. There is a difference between a program level environmental assessment and a project level environmental assessment. And just because the program level document, which is this environmental assessment, found some impacts, does not mean that when a project comes in in the future that that could not be exempt or that it would not meet project level thresholds for that particular environmental impact. And therefore, there are really no additional mitigation measures that are available because this is a program level document that, that would, that would lower these impacts to less than significant. So all of those are already being incorporated and presented in the package that is presented to Planning Commission tonight. I just wanted to briefly touch upon the general plan amendments that are being proposed. Chapter three, which is the land use and community design element, is being amended, as is the land use designations appendix. There are text and figure changes to both of these to make sure that they address state law requirements and the housing element requirements, to make sure that they're consistent. There are figure changes. There's a particular figure in chapter three that identifies density and heights and that is being amended as well to make sure that the priority housing sites can be developed at the densities and heights that, that we anticipate. Chapter five, there are text changes to minimize the environmental impacts resulting from development that I just touched upon in the last couple of slides. And then the general plan land use map is being amended for conforming changes to density and the land uses themselves. And with that, I'll move on to next steps. We got our letter from HCD. We had a housing element study session last Thursday. Tonight, we're gonna hopefully get a positive recommendation from the Planning Commission that the City Council adopt the housing element and associated general plan amendments. That will go to City Council on May fourteenth. We are hoping that we will be able to bring back zoning for the Planning Commission's consideration at the end of May. That's a tentative date. We'll see where we are. And we are currently tentatively scheduled to go to council with that for first reading in June. And then in summer, we'll do, conduct the second reading. So by July, we're hoping to have the second reading conducted on those ordinance amendments and continue preparation of the objective design standards that are required as part of our housing element update. And that those would be presented to Planning Commission and City Council in the fall. And then we'll move on to next steps in implementation of our housing element. And with that, I conclude my presentation that the Planning Commission make its recommendation as presented in the staff report, barring and the removal of one site. And I can read that APN number out in case anybody's interested. It is the Dish and Dash site, which HCD did not allow us to incorporate into our sites inventory. And that APN is three-five-nine-zero-eight-zero-two-nine. So that inadvertently made it into the draft resolution on the table. So that needs to be struck. With that, I conclude my presentation and we're ready for questions.
Great. Thank you very much for that very complete report. Any questions up here, clarifying questions or comments on the staff report?
Oh, just what was the reason Dish Dash did not qualify? Or don't they tell you?
I think it was a combination of factors, but mostly the building was newer and it seemed like a more viable commercial property than, say, the Pizza Hut and the rest of Fontana's that were nearby. And honestly, while we had had interest on those sites from developers, we'd never had anybody inquire about the Dish and Dash property. So it was one of those, we thought that could be a unified property, but that we were not successful in keeping that on the inventory.
I have quite a few questions and comments, but now should we reserve that for later discussion?
Maybe we should try to, if there are anything with the staff report, let's, let's do those first. I don't know if anybody else has any comments. I had two, actually. So I had one question. First of all, I think the presentation you gave us was really, really great. It's quite different in flavor than the, than the staff report that's in the packet. So I would encourage you to include that presentation in the materials you forward to the City Council. It's a, it's a good overview, quite a bit of a different, I think, a different flavor to it. There was one thing in there, just an interesting item that popped out at me. You had a slide that reviewed different things, which included ADU production. And it was interesting that there were a number of ADUs in that allocation, which were counted in the above moderate range and things. So it's interesting, one of the, one of the interesting characteristics that, that we had seen about ADUs in the past was that by their design, you know, by the limitations on size, that they normally would be counted in the low and perhaps very low areas. So I'm curious, how did some of those escape into the above, above moderate?
Yeah, that, that's a good question because Yeah, that, that's a good question because this is such a new frontier with there, by design, they should be affordable, but you can go online and find some that are renting for quite high prices. Some of them are not even used as anything more than additional square footage. So the percentage is really approved by HCD across the board regardless of jurisdiction. So this wasn't tailored specifically to Cupertino. You're just making an assumption that while a lot of them may be providing the lower income categories and moderate, some of them are not going to be. So I think is it like thirty, thirty, ten? Yeah, so is the breakdown by, by category or percentage? But yeah, it was, it was a breakdown that HCD accepted.
Interesting, that's a very interesting thing since, you know, this is one of those areas where, you know, I think the question had, had come up before about, you know, ADUs. Because of the high cost of, of building ADUs in the early period, that, you know, whether they would really actually fit into the, the low category, but, but that's just the way you count them. And so it's, it's kind of funny that they turn around and say, well, you know, the yield is not really a hundred percent, you know, by that rule.
Yeah, and I think if I could just add a, a lot of, a lot of what you do through the housing element is estimating and best guess. So even like income categories, your assumption is higher density is going to get you more affordability. But could that not play out in reality? Yes, I mean, it, it could be. But that's really the lens we're looking at it is there are some things that should in theory provide more affordable housing, whether they're deed restricted or not.
Then there was one other area, this was in the written staff report packet. And this had to do, this PU, I think you touched on this regarding the R one and R two and corner lot situation. So the final, the final way in which that's being handled was not completely clear to me. If you could, so the, I think, what was that question here was whether corner lots would be subject to actual rezoning or whether that was, you know, group rezoning on, on what was R one before?
So what, I think what we're hoping to achieve by this is permitting duplexes on properties that are zoned R one as long as they're located on the corner with up to four units total on those units. And we are still working through the actual mechanics of how do we get there? But we are not upzoning, so what, it does not make the existing single family homes there non-compliant. That's not the goal for this. This is to make sure that people have the option, if they wish to either convert or add housing that kind of meets those requirements, then they would get to up to a, a, a fourplex essentially, a maximum of four units.
So, so I think one part of that is if, if we were to look at the sum of the rezoning actions, we're not expecting there to be another thousand.
No, no, there won't be a list of one thousand, seventeen hundred units, corner lots. It would still continue to be the list of sixty-two properties that are on this list here.
And if, if I could just emphasize, because this has come up repeatedly, I mean, this strategy has been easily the lightning rod. And I feel like I've covered this, but the only properties being rezoned are the priority housing sites, the sixty-two parcels. This would, this policy, which will probably get refined further, we may look at the R two zoning standards later, but right now those R one sites on corner lots who are adjacent to commercial properties would have the option to develop up to four units, no more than four, using R two standards. But not any of them are being rezoned as part of this. So I just wanted to make that clear because I'm sure some people here tonight have that belief.
Yeah, it, it actually almost read, was unclear to me in that, that particular passage, so that's great.
So what are all the crossouts that go R two to R three in the housing element? Can you explain that? Because I, you're saying R two and I'm reading R three.
The crossout text, there was an earlier draft that you used R three standards, that is not what was approved. It's R two. There was, there was an earlier, I believe the second draft referenced R three, which was inaccurate. R two is what it would be. So in a sense, it's not increasing the allowable units per lot over what exists today.
Okay, so I don't know if you can comment on this, that project on Schofield, the twenty-three units? How is that, is that related to the housing element at all?
Nothing to do with the housing element. It's a preliminary application that is essentially what you'd fall into the builder's remedy category. But it has nothing, it's not a housing element site, has no connection to the housing element.
And then finally, I recall years ago when we were first looking at this and I was told we should not include sites where the owner has no interest in putting any housing on it. But now it seems that that advice is gone and we should include sites where the owner has no interest. But originally it was H, oh, HCD doesn't like to see that because, you know, it's unlikely that housing will ever be built there. So what, what changed that now HCD does want that?
Owner interest was always a factor and HCD would like to see it, but it's not the only factor. So many sites say we would get inquiries from developers or brokers. And the site was on the market and we were having housing developers contact us, but the owner would be unreachable or unresponsive. So we would be documenting conversations like that and letting HCD know. We also have other more statistical information in, in the tables in appendix B four, so things like site improvement to land value. If your improvement's really low, you have a, a commercial property that says underutilized, long-term vacancy, no investment going on, it makes it a redevelopment candidate in HCD's eyes. So it's more difficult if you don't have owner interest. You have to have a site that seems pretty clear that it's going to redevelop. And, you know, we had these conversations with HCD. But yeah, the, the majority, you're right, when we started this, we wanted to get owner interest on everything if we could, because it made the conversation easier.
So for the ADUs, I, I like what you said about it's not what really happens, it's what HCD says. Because when I'm looking at ADUs now, if you're building it with the expectation of renting it out to make money, it will never be affordable because it costs so much to build it. Unless, you know, you know, some of this for, for in-laws, whatever, but anyway, so.
Yeah, there's, there's different information and we'll probably know more in recent years of like, yeah, what, how are they really being used first off? You know, are they being rented out at all? It could be family members, could be somebody else who's not paying rent. It could just be the families using the ADU as extra square footage. Or it could be rented out and then it's varying degrees of affordability. So a lot of it is trying to make just a reasonable estimate. But I mean, this, this process, needless to say, everything in there has to meet HCD standards. Otherwise, you're not going to get a compliance letter.
So for Cupertino, how are the ADU applications going? I think I heard at a previous meeting that initially they were very high and then now it's, it's not.
I think they've declined, I don't know if you know more on the, the, I haven't looked at it really currently.
Yeah, since we did the APR, I haven't looked at it and I think there were ninety-two last, so I, but that's my recollection.
Okay, I'll, I'll save everything else I have for after the public comment. Any other comments with staff report or?
Just a question regarding the builder's remedy issue. Essentially, that will stay active until the rezoning is completed? Meaning we're still at, at risk of other projects coming up?
So because they applied under, as a pre-application under SB three thirty, they have six months, they basically vest their rights to what is in place at the time. And because we did not have a housing element that was certified, they basically have six months from that date to make a formal application. And then we would just have to process that project based on whatever standards were applicable to that, to that site at the time.
Got it, but I guess, I guess I'm getting to is time is of the essence to get that zoning done.
Right, so if you could have other projects come in, you are correct. Until we have rezoning in place, we have a non-compliant housing element. So we would remain subject to preliminary applications like that.
Got it, and another just clarifying question. Major changes to the housing element as we read it today would possibly derail the whole approval from city council and from HCD?
Not only major, even minor changes.
Even minor, okay.
I think things that, we may have mathematical corrections in tables that need to get corrected or text cleanup. But any kind of a substantive change to policies, additions or deletions, all of that would have to go back to HCD.
Got it, okay, and a normal process to go back and then come back to, with their feedback is three months, six months? Probably longer?
Probably less than that because of our settlement agreement. It kind of expedited things, it would probably be more in like the month and a half to two month range.
All right, okay, that's just helpful to know.
So why tonight are we doing this when we never had a chance to provide any input on, on the housing element?
Well, we had a lot of meetings, probably more than any other city.
I mean, since the draft housing element, not what happened three years ago.
But I also think one of the answers is we were trying to get the housing element completed. And by doing that, we were trying to address HCD's concerns. A concern they didn't have was outreach and public meetings, because we were able to demonstrate we had had a lot of them. Had that been a comment, we would have been back soliciting input. That said too, there were a lot of opportunities for people to comment. Every draft and revision to a draft had a public comment period. So we had five of those and we received a lot of written comments. They went to HCD and they got incorporated into this document as well. But I agree, the meetings were skewed far more to two thousand and twenty-two than two thousand and twenty-three. We had a lot of meetings early on, but we also then, being over a year late, had to get this finished.
So it's just, so now we're here and we're hearing, you better not make any change at all to what's in this document because it will be terrible for us, right? We might end up with more builder's remedy.
Answer, I mean, we also didn't know, we were hoping we were going to get a letter, we didn't know we were going to get that letter on April tenth.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, just to quickly clarify that, so we can't make any changes to the housing element tonight, right? Without kicking off another round of review by HCD. Does that also apply to the other amendments like the mobility element and the land use element?
It would not apply to those to the same degree. I think the goal with those though is to try to do what's necessary to adopt the housing element, which I realize that's a blurry line on, on some of those documents. But certainly, HCD's, you know, not as focused on something like the mobility element or something like that as they are on the housing element itself, where they, it's literally in most ways their document.
I, I have a couple of questions, so. So when was the last time we reviewed the housing element stuff in, on the planning commission?
Planning commission was on July fifth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Two thousand and twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
July, and that's what ended up being the draft one that we submitted on February third in stuff, you know, January thirty-first, we were late by three days.
Correct, from Jan, from July five, it went to the city council, planning commission recommendation at the end of August.
End of August, twenty twenty-two.
Thirty, right, council adopted the sites. And on February third, two thousand and twenty-three, we submitted a draft.
So it's roughly a year and a half or maybe two years worth of project, we were late by three days.
We were late submitting.
Submitting, yeah.
Yeah, because the July thirty-one was actually certified.
Yeah, but, but, but how many cities had a certified housing element by Jan, Jan thirty-first?
Very few, the only two cities I know that were on time in the Bay Area were Alameda and Emeryville.
So, so only two cities out of how many in the Bay Area?
Yeah.
Thirty, forty cities?
Yeah, there may have been others, but it was a very small number that were certified by the, the, the actual deadline.
So did they all get sued by this IMB group or?
Not all, but quite a few did, I don't know the number, we, we're not alone, quite, quite a few cities were sued.
And, and we were the only city to settle with them, is that right?
That I don't know. I do not know what the settlement status is. I'm, I'm sure there are others.
And, and, and so the reason for getting sued is the three days late? Is that the one are not having an approved housing element?
It was not having an approved housing element. So after the January thirty-one deadline, I believe the suit was filed the same day we submitted, I think it was February third. But we were sued for not having a compliant housing element.
But you're not sure if we are the only city that seem to have settled with them?
I'm sure others have, but I don't know the number and I don't know the cities.
And you said something about, you know, that gave us fast tracking, so what is this? Can you clarify that part?
I don't know if it's necessarily fast tracking, but the settlement agreement is governed by state law. So the, the time we have to prepare a revised draft, you essentially are in these forty-five day cycles. And HCD's on them as well. So their, their comment period would typically be ninety days for the first draft and went down to sixty. I believe they were then reduced also to a forty-five day period. So the responsiveness on both sides is reduced.
Okay.
And the CEQA process changed. For instance, one year ago, we had a scoping meeting in this room because we thought we were doing an environmental impact report. And we had actually been working towards that. But once the stipulated judgment was entered in in January of this year, the requirement then is to do an environmental assessment, which becomes part of your general plan, which is on the agenda tonight. It looks exactly like a draft environmental impact report, reads like one. But it is not a CEQA document because once you, once you're in this settlement arrangement, you're essentially exempt from CEQA, but you're required to do an environmental assessment. You still have to analyze the housing element. But again, it's, it's kind of speeding up the process because the CEQA process is very typically the longest and slowest thing in your timeline.
So, so if I had to summarize, so the last time the planning commission discussed the housing element was July two thousand and twenty-two. And then that ended up being a draft one, and then we had three drafts. Public had opportunity to comment on those drafts, but we didn't hold any public meetings like this. We held a lot of meetings, you know, before the, you know, submitting the first draft. But after that, you know, it's mostly online comments and feedbacks, but there was no meeting. This is the first time, you know, almost in two years we are meeting, the planning commission is meeting on the housing element. Between July two thousand and twenty-two to April two thousand and twenty-four.
No, that, that is correct, that last meeting was July five. There have been several city council meetings, number of community meetings, workshops. But yeah, the last planning commission was July.
Thank you.
Actually, if I could, if I could comment, you know, there was an excellent number, you know, set of questions there. Again, in preparation for the taking this to council, there may not be, I don't know if there's really time to be able to summarize, you know, the other lawsuits and, and outcomes. But if that's possible, that would be, probably be a useful piece of information to add to the council report. Okay, all right, I think let's, let's do the public comment, if that's okay. All right, okay, so we have one, two. We have five blue cards in the room and two speakers online now. Of course, you're welcome to make, you know, hand in a card if you're here or raise your hand online for the public comment. We, we will start, the first speaker is Connie Cunningham. And she will be followed by Oswaldo Osagueda.
Okay, good evening Chair Fong, Vice Chair Lynn Skog and commissioners. I am Connie Cunningham, Chair of the Housing Commission, speaking for myself only and an Audubon member. This sixth housing element to me reads like poetry. There are so many fine ideas captured within its pages. Because I'm pro-housing, very interested in low-income housing for our city. Tonight, I'm pleased to share my agreement with the zoning and policy changes that are being considered. I have one request, I urge you to add strategy, and I don't know if this affects that, you know, changes to the, whatever, but I'm just saying what it is. I urge you to add strategy HE five dot one, dot seven to policy HE five one, lower income and special needs households. I have provided. I have provided a draft of this proposed strategy to be shared on the overhead screen. And I'm not sure who does that because I don't have it. I sent it in, but I don't know how to put it up here. I used the format of the other strategies in the, excuse me, in the report. And the strategy would read title Cities Process for Assisting Unhoused Individuals, taken from the Cupertino City Council Resolution 20 dash 140. In accordance with Council Resolution 20 dash 140, adopted on December 15, 2020, the city will continue to use its resources to provide support to the Santa Clara County Community Plan to End Homelessness. The Cupertino community has expressed concern about unhoused individuals living on Cupertino property. The final sentence of the resolution states, quote, "The process to prioritize outreach and engagement to build trust and rapport has shown to be the most effective approach at helping unhoused individuals on a path to housing and addressing the community's concerns." And so I put it in the same format. So responsibility here is that you submit a request through Cupertino 311. For emergency situations, you call 911. And then there is a non-emergency welfare check number, phone number as well that can be put in. The timeframe is ongoing. Funding sources, I would think none will be required. And the objectives were as stated above. So separate from that, separate from that, I had four favorite changes and ads under land use, chapter three. Thank you for revising LU 1 dot 3 dot 1 dot 3. This version has removed the requirement that property be in the housing element to ever be built in the next eight years. Two, thank you for revising LU 1 dot 3 dot 1 dot 4. This version has removed the requirement for conditional use permits. I appreciate that very much because things can change in eight years, right, from what we're doing now. Thank you especially for me as a birder for adding two policies, LU 3 dot 5 light pollution and LU 3 dot 6 bird safety.
You've reached your time.
Uh oh. Okay. Well, I got the last little bit out. Okay, I did send it in writing. Thank you.
The next speaker is Oswaldo. Interesting.
Osagueda. You got it right.
Thank you.
No problem.
And then after that will be Jennifer Griffin.
Good evening, Chair, Chair Cupertino Planning Commission. My name is Oswaldo Osagueda. I'm a field rep carpenter for local carpenter at 405, covering Cupertino. I stand before you today to advocate for the inclusion of the area labor standards in Cupertino housing elements. As neighboring cities have recognized these standards are essential for fostering, fostering and achieving equitable community. It is time for Cupertino to follow, suit and and prioritize a well-being of this workforce and add encouragement language. By incorporating policies such as level wage, access to healthcare and apprenticeship opportunities. Cupertino has ensured that its residents not only have access to house housing, but also the the means to sustain themselves and their families. These standards are no luxuries and they are fundamental rights that every individual deserves. We cannot ignore the reality that many of the developments planned do little to benefit our community. Is is or it's a workforce. Instead, they exacerbate existing and applies a downward pressure of wages. It is time to break this cycle and build a future where everyone can thrive. Including the area labor standards in Cupertino housing element is not only the right to to the only, sorry, the right thing to do. It is also the smart thing to do. By investing in our workforce, we can create more resilient and and a community for generations to come. Let us not fall behind our neighbors, but instead led a way towards and more yes in the in the future. I urge the plant commission to prioritize the well-being and Cupertino's residents and include area labor standards and upcoming housing elements. And thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jennifer Griffin. She will be followed by Rhoda Fry.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Frankly, I'm a little bit confused about what we're supposed to be doing tonight. I thought we were approving the zoning, but it doesn't sound like we're doing that. I maybe we can get clarification because I really couldn't tell from the description. So I kind of came prepared. I am completely baffled by the SEQA. I have asked, I sent a letter to the city council asking for clarification between the settlement of the lawsuit by YIMBY Law. And normally there is a blanket SEQA that is provided at the time certification comes for the housing element. This is what's happened in San Francisco. I've been following 48 Hills. And I am completely baffled. I don't understand how the YIMBY Law, which has nothing to do with Cupertino, has anything to do with our housing element. To me, it's an impediment. It was a nuisance lawsuit. Palo Alto was sued the same day. Los Altos was sued by YIMBY Law a year before. They have sued many others. And I I put that into a nuisance category. I think they have impeded the progress of our housing element in Cupertino. So I would like to have a good, clear clarification of whatever they're doing with their lawsuit. To me, it has nothing to do with HCD and the housing element. The housing element trumps whatever happened with YIMBY Law. They have nothing to do with our city. And I I don't see how they can override something like the housing element. The other situation is that I wanted you to realize that SB 9 has evidently been declared unconstitutional for charter law cities. And we're hoping that the general laws will be declared, that SB 9 will be declared unconstitutional within several months. I am concerned about this strange thing going on with the R1 corner lots. Mr. Mandelmann tried to do this in San Francisco about four years ago. I don't get it. I don't understand it. To me, it sounds like we're doing something strange. And if SB 9 is thrown down, then that will be illegal to take R1 lots in residential and convert them to four. We need to look ahead because as far as I'm concerned, it was shown to me by a statistician nine months ago on Zoom that the RINAN numbers are wrong. The gentleman was shaking. He was so angry that that the the RINAN numbers were being used this way. It is a disgrace to use numbers badly. And this is exactly what has been done. HCD will not acknowledge what they have done. And I think that that is going to compromise what we are doing. And I sure hope they're not planning on desertifying us like Portola Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Rhoda Fry and the the final speaker in the House will be Jean Bedore.
Hi, you have my written comments. I'd like to echo Oswaldo's comments. Skilled and trained labor is important. And also I'd like to add that developers should provide a safe and secure place to park workers' trucks and truck and tools if they live in those developments. You know, we're looking at echo what Ms. Griffin has also said. I was really shocked by the changes that have been made recently without public participation. But and I'm I'm hoping that we can potentially remove them, definitely over and beyond what the HCD requirements. There's another surprise to me that I talked about, that I wrote to you about. And I only looked at roughly one aspect of the housing element, and I'm concerned that there could be other similar issues in there. And that re- that is with respect to Evolich Court site. All of a sudden, the site could grow by point four, three acres because public road into the site could be purchased by the property owner. So effectively, the housing density there could be increased by 20%. So, you know, anybody who's looking at the plan, they have those four addresses. Okay, get it, you know, up to 89 homes in that location. But now with the potential addition of that public road, we're looking at adding up to 15 more homes on that site. That's a lot. And I'm hoping that that could be potentially changed within the housing element to sort of say that if the developer purchases that piece of property from the city, that it 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 would, its effect would be zero. But again, to kind of spread it out among the development. I mean, it makes sense for the developer to buy that property to develop the property, but I don't think it should be adding density to property. Very, very concerned about SEQA. When a develop or when a developer needs to do SEQA, they're not going to have anything to tear off of. How do you decide which projects are infill, which ones are not? And by the way, I'm not personally affected by the traffic on Linda Vista, but I'm keenly aware of the traffic in Tri School area, Kennedy, Lincoln, Montevista. And can't imagine what adding 104 homes plus, up to 104 home plus, density bonus of other projects in the area, et cetera. Corner lots, multifamily, you know, could do to traffic. So, you know, where how will the city attorney respond to pleas from the public for for due diligence with respect to SEQA? Where's the study? How will emergency vehicles get in and out timely? And then the other thing I'm concerned about is a reduction in park mitigation fees. We have more high density. We're going to have more demand for parks and we need to keep those fees so we can purchase property to provide open space for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker in the room is Jean Bedore.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Jean Bedore, and it has been a long haul. I was involved in the meetings from the very beginning, and they have been gone on and on and on. So I have to commend staff for hanging in there and finally coming up with an acceptable housing element. I would like to address one particular aspect tonight. And that is, I was very happy to see your policy of supporting teacher housing and ELI. However, I think it needs to be expanded to include senior housing. There is, and the reason for this is that our population is aging. And the section in the housing element regarding senior housing is not, is quite dated. The demographic information is 2017. Well, there was a census in 2020, and there have been additional updates to the census data. And since, and in that housing element, you do not define what's considered to be seniors. Now, at the senior center, if you're 50 plus, you're classified as a senior. And the 2020 data, census data, shows that approximately one third of the people in of our of our population in Cupertino is 50 plus. And it's amazing how many we have in the 80 and 90 year old categories. So I think this is an area that definitely needs more emphasis by the city in providing policy and support for this type of housing. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. If we could go to our online speakers.
First speaker is San Ar.
Hi, San, welcome.
Evening, Chair Feng and Planning Commission. Thank you for this opportunity. I want to commend the work done by Lou Connelly and Pio Gosh. They've been very professional and showed a high amount of patience through this process in a process where we had little control and needed to work with the with the feedback coming from HCD as well as all of the different feedback coming in from residents. So I appreciate all of the work that they did and 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 their work ethic showed through this process. I was also part of many community meetings and saw the kind of uninformed and and unaware resident feedback that that they had to face the brunt of and saw them deal with it very professionally. So I want to commend them and commend staff for for the work done. I would like to see this housing element moved through the process as efficiently as possible so that we can minimize exposure to builders remedy projects. I think the work that the staff and the consultant have done is is quite commendable. It tries to contain the exposure to the the corridors around Stevens Creek, Homestead, Deanser to the extent they can. I would encourage us to look at ways to avoid the corner lot impact if we can and avoid the impact of lots that are about retail and commercial. I understand the goals of AFFH, but if there's any way to to minimize or avoid the impact of corner lots, that is a that is something that would be greatly appreciated by residents. I hope there's some flexibility there. I also hope that the proposed site at Evolich Court can be relooked at. That is adjacent to Linda Vista Park, which does see a fair bit of wildlife. Same thing for the Blackberry Farm and the connector there between the Blackberry Farm Golf Course and the Blackberry Farm. So I hope we don't get into identity housing on Evolich Court. I hope we can maintain the character of that neighborhood. I'm also a parent of Kennedy or used to be a parent of Kennedy, current parent of Montevista and also parent of Faria. I've driven that road every day, twice a day for Kennedy Drops and Picks. And and will be doing that again in a couple of years. So my second one is in Kennedy. And it is extremely well trafficked road because parents drop kids on the backside of Kennedy and they take Linda Vista Drive and they make a left onto Columbus. So anybody coming from west of Stelling, I'm sorry, west of Bob is basically likely to take that Linda Vista stretch. And then instead of taking the front side of Kennedy and get stuck in traffic, they take the backside through that Linda Vista Drive and into Columbus. So that is a very heavy school traffic area. And it is also the only path to connect into Stelling and Rainbow because you can't really get back from Kennedy to McLalen. That stretch is completely jammed. And so parents like myself that have to drop Kennedy and then drop Faria actually depend on that stretch from Linda Vista to Columbus to drop in Kennedy and then take Bob southbound and then Rainbow eastbound and Stelling northbound to get to Faria. So I encourage you to.
Your your time is up, but thank you. Thank you for the comments. The next speaker, please.
Last up is Tracy Kay.
Hi, thank you, Planning Commission. Just wanted to make a quick comment about the potential of having corner lots turn into fourplex or four unit lots. I think a lot of residents would really oppose this. I speak for myself only, but I have spoken with a number of residents in the area that are upset about what is happening, for example, at Schofield or the plans for that turning into a, you know, a corner lot turning into 20 units. You know, and I I think you have to take a step back and ask like, what is the benefit? What are you trying to do here? If you're trying to solve for a shortage of housing, I don't think that, you know, turning one or two corner lots here and there and into, from one into four is is really solving it. You know, the the better way to solve it would be through, you know, actual larger apartment complexes, which you are, you know, solving for along Stevens Creek and at Valco. But but what are you, you know, from turning from one into four is an extremely incremental way to go about even mathematically trying to solve this problem. So I guess I would ask you to please, you know, take a step back and and think about the optics of of this, the mathematics of this decision. You know, it it feels like there is more to lose than to gain here because you would be upsetting a lot of the residents in the neighborhoods that have their corner lot potentially turning from one to four. So you're upsetting people and you're only gaining three additional housing units. So how is that? How is that beneficial in the long run? When you're driving people out of the neighborhoods that they, you know, spent so much to buy into because they wanted that neighborhood feel, but then all of a sudden these neighborhoods are turning into, you know, apartments and and dense housing. And, you know, single family homes are already no longer being built, but there are places for apartments to be built many, in many places, up and down Stevens Creek. So yeah, please reconsider that. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. I did get another blue card. This is from Nagash. The one thing, it wasn't clear on the card, we're we're taking public comment for the for the housing element. So I don't know whether this is related to that. If it if it is, please go ahead.
Can I please speak, sir? Am I loud enough? So my.
So my fundamental question I have about the housing element, I believe regular citizens are being asked to provide about five and a half parking stalls, if you will, two inside a garage, two outside the garage, and one and a half else. And where are all these parking stalls coming from each of these additional residential units being provided? Because if their corner lot is being converted into four, I can't see more than four parking stalls coming up from there. So who's making for all these new housing? Where is the parking coming from? That's my fundamental question.
Great. Thank you very much.
Doesn't have to me. Anybody can answer that.
All right. With that, I'd like to close the public comment session now. We'll bring it back up for comments here. Now, I guess this will be across the entire scope. The document is huge. I don't know whether we want to go in steps. Perhaps we might want to, you know, pace, kind of pace and have mark off time to speak on things, but especially in light of the fact that this hasn't, you know, hasn't been here a lot. I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to kind of speak their mind, you know, on all the elements of the document.
Oh, so before I make my comments, I wonder if the staff could answer the two public comments. One, can we put anything in there regarding prevailing wage or union wages? And can you talk about the parking for duplexes, fourplexes, ADUs, and what the state doesn't allow us to do?
On the first question, again, modifying the document now would not be advisable, and I think in terms of prevailing wage, that is an issue in the state, but it's not something that's directly related to the housing element.
Okay, so so no cities have put that in their housing element?
I have no idea if no city has done it, but it's certainly not something that was ever part of our discussion with HCD in terms of doing that. And I know most prevailing wage issues are handled through a number of different state legislation. So, you know, I think that's something that this is not really the forum to address prevailing wage. And in terms of parking, again, where I think we're again talking about the corner lot situation, where we're looking at allowing R1 lots to develop under existing duplex standards, which I think the existing requirement is three onsite parking spaces for a duplex. Parking standards, I think, are also something that we're going to be revisiting and looking at as we go forward because I think a lot of Cupertino's, as we see through our density bonus, a lot of those are the first thing to get waived because parking standards are generally high and are something that have not been updated for a while. So I think in terms of getting more density, that's something we know we're going to have to look at. And, you know, specifically in terms of getting this missing middle into the neighborhoods, I think it's something where we're looking at if it's going to be like a one-per-unit ratio, that is, I think, something that's going to be more appropriate for trying to get that. Having a high parking requirement, which adds cost, is one of the things that would undermine getting missing middle and more affordable housing in the neighborhoods. While I'm on that, too, I know there was also a comment about, I think the last speaker said, why are we considering this corner lot policy? Because we can, you know, we would be better off having higher-density housing. We're already providing a lot of opportunity for higher-density housing, but again, this policy is really tied to fair housing requirements, not meeting our RENA. We know we have the capacity to meet our RENA, but meeting the RENA alone is not what HCD is looking for. So this policy is something Cupertino and other cities that are high-resourced cities were being asked to do this or something like it to get more affordable housing opportunities into R1 zoning districts, which make up by far the majority of Cupertino's land. So that's really the answer to that question. It's not tied to RENA. It's a fair housing issue. And I did want to clarify, I know the first speaker, Jennifer, had asked about whether zoning is being considered tonight. I think that was addressed at the outset. The zoning will come in a subsequent Planning Commission and City Council meeting, so that is not part of tonight's action.
Can I follow up one question regarding the corner lot duplexes versus single-family with three ADUs? Effectively, which one do you, would you imagine to end up with more density on on a lot? If we were to take a stereotypical, I don't know, 8,000 square foot lot, corner lot? So I guess people are concerned that duplex housing will actually make this look very dense, but to me, three ADUs with a single-family home is probably not very different than what you're proposing. So if you could, maybe that could allay some people's concern.
No, that's a very good question because that is really, two things we're trying to accomplish with this strategy is to get the additional, hopefully affordable by design units, but also to keep in mind, these are going into R1, single-family neighborhoods, and not to do something that's completely out of character with those neighborhoods. Currently, right now, all R1 lots, corner or not, can have four units through the updates to our ADU ordinance. You can also have four lots under R2, the duplex and two ADU units. So if you think about it that way, this strategy is not allowing any additional units to what our current zoning ordinance allows. A lot of it's probably going to be in the details as to how you design this. The R2 ordinance has an existing maximum height of 30 feet, R1 is 28. So it's two feet. R2 is higher, but that's not terribly discernible. The goal is to, again, get more units while maintaining the character of the neighborhood. And again, this this strategy, I know there were other cities that were doing something similar, that were having more units than four allowable on lots like this. So, yeah, the the goal is that we're not going to have something that looks terribly different than a large, single-family home.
So a duplex could have two detached ADUs, is that correct?
Correct.
But a single-family home could have one detached ADU, one attached ADU, and one junior ADU? Is that not, Pugh's shaking her head?
You were right up until late last year. That has been amended by the City Council earlier this year with when they adopted the ADU changes. And essentially, one could have a primary unit, which is their single-family home, plus either three attached ADUs, three detached ADUs, or three JADUs.
Okay, so they did not follow what the Planning Commission?
Correct, yes.
Recommended, okay.
They went further than what state allows, correct.
Too bad, okay.
So, but but if you really look at practically, I mean, mathematically, it looks the same, like, you know, one single-family home with, you know, three ADUs, JADUs, right? Whereas, you know, a corner home with, you know, fourplexes. But if you really look at, you know, what's likely to happen, I don't think, you know, people are going to build, you know, one single-family unit with, you know, multiple ADUs because mostly it's a one-to-one, right? If they want to have an ADU, right? Whereas, you know, corner lots, there are high chances that corner lot will go to a, become a fourplex, right? Because somebody might buy it and, you know, try to build a unit, right? So that's a legitimate concern in terms of, you know, if you really look at, you know, what's going to, likely to happen, that, you know, the corner lots turning into, you know, fourplexes and, you know, more than four is likely to happen than, you know, somebody building a house with four ADUs or three ADUs.
Yeah, I mean, it is difficult to know just because you now have this strategy or your ordinance changes with ADU, for instance. How many people are actually going to build these? It's very difficult to know. I think for the ADUs, we found the majority are happening to where people are rebuilding, and, you know, the lot has had a complete demo, and then they rebuild, and then you get the ADUs. But it's not like a lot of people are running out just trying to get ADUs. I would assume a similar thing is going to happen with corner lots. I mean, one of the bases for these is if you go into older neighborhoods, you often had larger, more prominent homes on corner lots, and they were the first homes that as time went by would be turned into multifamily housing. So in a sense, we're replicating something that had existed for a long time. It's just that nobody's really building these anymore. So we're trying to give incentive for developers to do that. We don't really need to offer incentives for townhomes because everybody wants to build them. This is trying to find something that should at least provide a more affordable option within a neighborhood without putting something architecturally in a neighborhood that just doesn't fit.
So just on the numbers, right, just for my own benefit, right? So when we submitted the first draft, we did, you know, 4,588 units and, you know, and plus, you know, 15 to 20% you know, buffer we added, right? Because that's what was felt like, you know, needed. And we took, you know, full credit for all the pipeline units. But now what we are approving are in front of us is, you know, a significant, significantly a higher number, right, with a 35% you know, buffer built in, right? Instead of 4,588 units, you know, we are approving close to 6,250 units or something like that. And we didn't get credit for all the pipeline units, like, you know, Valco, instead of getting the full credit, we are only getting, you know, two-thirds. And 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 Hamptons, you know, we are only, we are getting zero credit, right? So it's almost, those are two biggest, you know, housing projects, but, you know, we are getting hit with, you know, lack of getting full credit for them. And so are there other cities, you know, that are having a similar issue in terms of, you know, not getting credit for the pipeline projects? I'm just trying to see, you know, how did we end up in this situation?
And I know prior to Cupertino, San Francisco had a similar comment of too much reliance on pipeline projects. And I'm sure there were other cities. You know, Cupertino having, you know, one significant project like Valco, where you had 2,400 units right out of the gate. I mean, that was over half of your RENA right there. So I think Cupertino would have been in that, you know, rare exception where you legitimately had a lot of pipeline sites.
Yeah.
Our, you know, our issue again with HCD was it's not just are these approved? Yes, they are. They're entitled, they can build. But are they going to get built by 2031? And that's a project the scale of Valco, I mean, for instance, they haven't built anything yet, and they've had approvals. So it's difficult to make that case that the entire project would be built out seven years from now. So we received a portion that seemed like a logical amount that would.
So just for the record, HCD is saying there's no way that the Valco project is going to be fully built by 2031. That's why they're not giving us the full credit.
Yeah, I think their determination is that that seems extreme, that the entire project would be built out by then.
And they don't think, you know, this project will be built in seven years. Okay, interesting. And and isn't that number much higher than 2,400 for the Valco? Isn't it 2,700, something like that?
Almost 2,669, I think. It's it's under 2,700, right?
So so we're not getting credit for almost 1,000 units?
Yeah, a little 900 and some, we're not, we're not.
If I may add to that, they're not giving us credit in the housing element for those units, but if those units were built and we issued building permits for them, we would get credit.
We should be able to claim.
Yes, we can claim them in our annual progress report.
Okay. And when we rezone these properties, upzone them, is is it possible to attach a conditional rezoning? Like, we want these guys, you know, to go and build, right? If they're not building or pulling permits or submitting plans, you know, in two years, the zoning has to fall back to the world because otherwise, you know, there's no way to force these people to build. They're going to sit on this, you know, waiting for, you know, one more upzoning later on.
No, there is no way to conditionally zone a property. So once a property is zoned, you've made a land use change. And, you know, that's always the important thing to keep in mind with the housing element. There's no actual development project proposed with this. We're just trying to put the framework in place for people to be able to build these units and to streamline it as much as possible for these 62 parcels. But when they're rezoned, they're rezoned. And I think in the sense, too, from in HCD's eyes, they want to see for at least the length of this housing element period that we've kept things in place that would enable that housing to get built.
So going back to the numbers, total numbers, right? So my understanding, reading through the split, we need to build roughly, you know, 41% of our homes as, you know, low-income housing, right? Low income and very low income combined is around 41%, right? And most of the housing projects we approve in the city, they are either, they're required to build, you know, 15 to 20% of, you know, low-income housing, BMR, right? So there is a big disconnect. If you have to get to the 41% number, we almost have to build, you know, twice the number, right? Then, you know, like 45, like almost 9,000, 10,000 homes to get to that, you know, low-income housing number. Is my math correct?
If you're looking at, yeah, what our BMR requirements are, 15% for rental, 20% for owner-occupied housing, which, yeah, is not going to, it's not the same proportion as our RENA. So you would have to look at things, too, as you may get projects that are going to have a very high percentage of affordability, even 100%, which is is common when we talk to developers that do that. But also, you know, one way to try to combat that is trying to kick up your BMR requirements, put a higher percentage in place.
Higher percentage?
An issue with that, though, is that that can also be a constraint on housing getting built.
So it's the same HCD that comes down on us, saying, you know, don't increase the percentage of, you know, requirement for, right?
There's a balance between, yeah, constraints and enabling housing to get constructed.
And then there are sacramental lawmakers, you know, passing all these laws, you know, lowering that requirement further, right? So basically, you know, the RENA and HCD and lawmakers, they're not on the same page in terms of, you know, what they want us to do.
There are inconsistencies in this process, yes.
Okay, thank you.
If I could comment on that, I think, you know, I don't know whether we better to do kind of factual questions earlier, but I think the objective of HCD is to build homes. So so, you know, if you if you took your first objective, how do I get people to build as many homes as possible? You would do a certain thing, but that would probably, by nature, yield a lower number of of low-income homes. So I think it's a balance. You know, the the way that you'll achieve these numbers are you would you would probably have to build out at a higher level, and that actually is HCD's objective than the RENA requirement. The RENA was a minimum. I think, I mean, I think that's the reasoning.
So basically, you know, we use all these excuses of, you know, low-income housing or teacher housing and all that, you know, to kind of approve market rate housing?
Yeah, in some respects, there's no, there's no negative to having that, right? I mean, you know, I think that, you know, because one of the common questions that's asked is, you know, if the state is so interested in having low-income housing, then they have to give us money to build low-income housing. I mean, that that part is very clear as well, and this is a, you know, this kind of a marketing incentive for for people. You determine what is the level to which you can build a a project, you know, which a private person could build a project and make a profit, and then and then, you know, make that the target.
Well, I think it's, you know, it's basic economics, right? Increase in supply will, even if it's moderately priced, should result in a in a lower cost of buying or renting homes.
Has it anywhere worked? I haven't seen it.
Guns and butter, Milton Keynes.
Other comments?
I am just curious, yeah, as far as the process for what we want to do for the rest of the evening. Considering what we know as far as we can't effectively make changes, is the intention to read through the entire document because is that just for the sake of us reading it out loud, or is it because we're planning on making some changes? I just don't see the purpose in us being here for hours going line by line if we're effectively not doing anything. I don't mean to try to cut anyone short, but I also don't want to be here for the sake of just being here.
Yeah, but the EIR is pretty long, or the environmental assessment is pretty long. I think the answer is probably, well, I don't know. I guess if I were being pragmatic, I would say nothing is perfect. We will, you know, there are probably things that any one of us would change if we had a clean sheet of paper. The I think the interesting thing, the interesting item that that I think we will do the best in terms of meeting our charter, if we identify the things that, you know, if there's something that's really not right, to identify that and at least raise that as an issue, and then, you know, the council can decide based on that whether, you know, do we need to go, do we dare go for another cycle? I mean, I.
Can I can I suggest that we at least limit our comments to things that you think are extremely important? Because otherwise, we will be here for six hours, and I really don't see the point of that.
Is that good? Everybody? Yeah.
Wait, so we're limiting it to six hours, you said?
Five hours and 50 minutes.
Five hours and 59 minutes.
Oh, 58 now. So I had a couple of comments, if I if I can go. And hopefully, I'm going to try and limit myself to things that are not trying to make changes. changes to the housing element, but outside of that, so things that hopefully the staff can consider making, you know, edits to the amendments, the proposed amendments. So one thing, so before I get started on that, let me talk about the, the corner lots. I think corner lots are a good idea. I think it's a really great way for if you, you know, for people that want to create generational wealth and want to raise their families in a, in a more residential area. It's, it's a good compromise to add some gentle density to, without really altering the, the feel of the neighborhood. You know, my son went to Lawson Middle School and it took me, I would say, a good two years to realize that all the houses across the street from Lawson are actually duplexes. Didn't realize that for two years. And then I was like, wow, those are pretty cool. They look nice and they fit into the neighborhood very nicely. So, so I definitely am a big fan of this. I think this is a, a good way to do it. It's a good compromise, so we're not just creating a, a culture of haves and have-nots and people who live on Stevens Creek on the seventh floor of an apartment building versus people who live in, in an R-one zoned lot. That being said, we do need to talk about the zoning standards. The R-two zoning standards need to be revised to, so, you know, somebody in the audience brought up the, the parking minimums and that's a really good point. We can't ask for six parking spaces for each of these corner lots. So we would need to reduce the parking minimums. We would need to look at the setbacks, maybe reduce the setbacks, reduce the, or increase the site coverage limit from forty percent to something a little bit higher to allow these, these four units to actually be, you know, of a usable size. So, so those are my thoughts on, on the corner units. In the staff report, it mentions that the staff will be looking at potentially reducing parkland dedication fees to, again, to make it easier for, for developments to be made and that's fine. I understand the constraint. So, you know, not going to say we shouldn't do that because it sounds like it's something we, we need to do and, fine. But I would like the staff to come back with, when they come back to us with the proposed parkland dedication fee reduction, it would be great if staff can come back to us with suggested plans to mitigate the negative impact of that. So to kind of put it in context, Cupertino has one of the lower levels of canopy among all the cities in the Bay Area or in the South Bay. We are in the lower third, if not one of the lowest. And we, our canopy has been decreasing steadily for ten years and we have no canopy plan in place right now to stabilize or increase our canopy. So anything that will contribute to our canopy being deteriorated even further concerns me. And we have a lot of quivers in our, or arrows in our quiver, sorry. And so it would be great if you can come back with, you know, making it easier to build parklets or pocket parks or, you know, working with valley water to develop creek trails or, you know, buying dilapidated housing and building mini parks. I don't know. But, you know, some ideas of what we can do to create more parkland and not count sidewalks as, as parkland. I think so, oh, yeah, the, sorry. The next thing is the, the VMT. I didn't write down the page number, but it's, it's in the staff report somewhere. It says that the metric that the city will track will be the service population VMT versus the per capita reduction, VMT and per capita was crossed out. And that concerns me because it feels like VMT per capita is a more aggressive standard than, than the service population VMT, if I'm understanding it correctly. Maybe I'm wrong. PU looks like she wants to say something.
I just, two, two points that I wanted to make.
Yeah.
The service population, the service population VMT includes residents and employees, not just per, per capita doesn't necessarily include employees that come to our city. So it's actually more inclusive.
Oh, okay, great.
Than just per capita. And we do have our environmental consultant online in case you have any questions about that.
Okay. If it's, if it's even more inclusive, awesome. That's great. Awesome, great. Yeah, and then the final comment I had was, I think Jean raised a really good point. We have an aging population. I don't know what we can do to, again, without changing the, the housing element, if there's anything we can do in all, in any of the other elements to make this more senior, you know, tailor it better to senior housing, that would be great. I don't know what that would look like.
Just wanted to add to, several of the policies in the housing element do specifically call out seniors and as one of the special needs groups, we have to analyze through HCD. I can't come, the, the policy's off the top of my head, but I know there are several that specifically call out seniors as a population that have special needs and that we need to try to address that because your, your point is right, as was Jean's, is you have an aging population. And, you know, that is a group you specifically have to call out what you're doing to meet their, their special needs in terms of housing.
So how does that work? Like, do we create like a minimum ADA-friendly building guidelines or, or senior guidelines? Like, how does that, how does that get implemented, I guess?
We can do things like that. We can look at including things like universal design that enhance mobility, which I know several cities have done, which I would believe will be including through our objective design standards later this year. So you're, you know, again, promoting mobility certainly for seniors where you're able to go, say, enter a house without encountering steps, move through a house more easily. You know, there are going to be other things we can look at for that as well, but I think that's a good design feature because I know aging in place becomes one of those big issues with, you may no longer need the large single-family home, but you feel sort of trapped into it because you don't want to leave the, the region. But I, I just did want to say that seniors as a group were one that we had to specifically have policies address in our housing element.
Okay, great, awesome. And I just want to let everyone also know, I had several small comments on the mobility element that I just emailed to the staff and I'm not going to go through them here.
Yeah, I'll go. Oh, my microphone's already on. So I disagree with Seema. I think getting rid of park mitigation fees or reducing them is a terrible idea and are we required to do that on all?
I said it was a terrible idea too.
Oh, you did? Okay, so she agrees, we should not get rid of park mitigation fees. Are we required to get rid of it on VLI, LI or anything? Or is this just something that got put in there?
I think the goal is, and I can't remember the exact wording though, is to survey and consider what we can do in terms of reducing park fees. So there, there's not a hard commitment saying we're going to cut fees by X amount, but what can we do if in fact park fees are seen as higher in Cupertino and a constraint on development? I think the other piece of Commissioner Lynn Scott, what she was saying is that if we're doing that, we need to have some strategy or plan in place for how we're going to address potential impacts to parks, whether it's additional parkland, park facilities, trails. So to not do something like that in a vacuum, to just slash fees without any regard for how that might impact parks.
And Commissioner Lynn Scott also mentioned something that I saw in there is, how on earth did it get in there that like pedestrian sidewalks will be considered parkland? I mean, that is bizarre.
It's open, no, nothing is built there.
Yeah, I, I think the word is connections that's used in there, not sidewalks.
Okay, fine, connections. How are connections parks?
Well, they're connections, they're trails. I mean, there's a broad view of what could be considered as open space. Is it a soccer field or traditional park? No. And I think this is one of the things to look at privately owned, publicly accessible areas as a way of expanding, you know, open space or park resources. Certainly a common sidewalk is not being considered parks, but I think having connections and trails could fall into that category.
I mean, by that definition, asphalt road is a park. So I, I would say just because it's a connection, if it's a hardscape, in an impermeable hardscape, I don't know that that should qualify as a parkland.
I think it's also emphasized on pedestrians, the way the, it's, it's written, not vehicular roads. But I, I understand in terms of a traditional, what people have in their mind of a park, that's not really meeting that definition. But I think it's trying to take a more expansive look of parks and park-like features, including trails.
So, did that get in there by placeworks or who decided to put something like that?
Everything in this document is something that HCD either suggested or had to bless.
Okay, so they may have suggested that we consider those connectors as parkland.
A more expansive view of what could be considered parks, yes.
Wow. Okay. So I had a question about the Hamptons. Specifically, the last time I met with Irvine Company about two and a half years ago, their position was they wanted to wait, they, they wanted to wait to build, but they didn't want to wait so long that they had to build the fifteen percent inclusionary instead of ten percent. So did they actually say that they're not building and that's why it's not in the pipeline anymore? Or how, how did it get excluded?
We never got any response from anyone at Irvine Company at all and we had written them several, several letters to ask, do you plan on building? Do you have a schedule? Do you have a phasing plan? Do you have anything? We never got any response from them. So their development agreement is good for another two years.
Right.
But they have made, what, since twenty sixteen, no progress towards redeveloping that site. And I think unlike a Valco where you had a vacant mall and now you have a demolished center, they have three hundred and forty-two occupied units on that property right now. So the ability to relocate three hundred and forty-two households and then build an additional six hundred units is a tough one to convince anybody they're going to do by twenty thirty-one.
But actually, it was in their plan to relocate anyone that wanted to while they were building. I, I'm just surprised that they have neither explicitly stated they will not build or that they will build. And that's the feeling I got last time I talked to them was, we're not going to say we're not building because of, we don't want to lose our ten percent grandfathering out of inclusionary. So I, I'm still hoping that they're going to come back at the, you know, at the last minute and say, okay, now, you know, we want to build or we want an extension, do we, I don't know, do we give extensions?
Two development agreements? You, you actually just reviewed two hotel development agreements recently, so they could do that.
That's true, right, yeah. Okay, so for the Rise slash Valco, does HCD consider the addition, the additional burden of all the office space? I mean, because the reality is the rise would worsen the jobs-to-housing ratio if they build all the office. So, or are they just going to say, oh, in the seventh cycle, you know, in the seventh cycle, we're going to get you for all that office space?
So I can help answer that a little bit. The, the rise projections in terms of the office space are already included in all the build-out numbers. And so they aren't necessarily looking at those as new square footage moving forward in projections. Those are already built into whatever they've projected so far.
Okay, so it's in our arena now for?
It should be, yes.
For that, okay. And then there was a thing about the BMR fees. I have an issue with charging BMR fees on retail. You know, it's one thing to charge it on office space, but we're losing so much retail as a result of RENA and now we're going to make it even harder for new retail because we're going to charge BMR fees on it. I mean, I would love to take that out somehow and not charge BMR fees if, if anyone actually built new retail. But like you said, any change we make would be, result in them, you know, sending us back for another, another cycle? Is that what you're saying? Even though the?
We would have to submit the change to them and have them review it and.
And then there's the issue of in the, I'll tell you, the Strategy HE dash two-point-three-point-six about converting schools to residential development. So here we are adding, if we add six thousand units, we'll probably add nine thousand new residents, including a lot of children because of our schools. And yet we're saying we should convert school sites to housing instead of saving them for when we actually need them, which has happened in the past. I mean, my kids went to two schools that were, had been closed and reopened when the, you know, population suddenly changed. So I, yeah, I, I hate that part, HE two-point-three-point-six. I mean, churches are fine, but I don't think school districts, I don't think schools should be included for residential development. We already went park mitigation fees, the parking requirements. I actually have a different view. I think we should be going the other way on low-income and very low because those are the people that have the most need for a safe, safe parking. You know, they're, they have work vehicles, they're unlikely to be able to do remote work and they would be unable to charge electric vehicles if they have no parking. And I hate the idea of exporting parking onto city streets, which is essentially what we're doing. It makes it more difficult to do protected bike lanes because people go nuts when they lose their street parking because they have no park, no off-street parking. So I think, I agree, our parking standards are outdated, especially given the move towards electric vehicles, which require off-street parking for charging. Let's see, what else? So in the fifth cycle, we had arena of ten sixty-four, a housing element of sixteen hundred units. All the sites were approved and as of today, eleven of those units are actually occupied. Eleven at the Veranda, we added eight more to make it nineteen, but I don't think any of those other five sites are occupied yet unless Westport suddenly.
There, there are a few townhomes that are occupied.
Okay, a few.
Yeah.
Okay, or under contract, okay. So how the heck do we think we're going to get over six thousand units built in, in eight years when in the last eight years we got eleven built? I mean, is this just an exercise of futility just to make HCD happy? Because we know there is no way that that housing will ever get built, especially the low-income housing. So, yeah, we can approve this and all and do it like all the other cities do, but, you know, what can we actually do to get the housing built? I mean, can we find developers if they have an approved site and don't build? Or if they pull permits and don't go vertical, do we have any power to force them to build on the sites that they asked for to be in the housing element? Or is, it's just, we're screwed?
Housing element is primarily an exercise where cities and counties have to show that they have adjusted their land use to accommodate the RENA. That's probably the, the most paramount thing about doing your housing element. Cities, though, as you're saying, we don't build the housing, we're reliant on developers to follow through. It's increasingly becoming more of our obligation to work with them and try to encourage housing, but we can't force anybody to build anything.
Okay, and if they don't follow through, what is our punishment as a city that doesn't actually build housing? I mean, since we don't build the housing, if they don't build the housing, do we get punished by the state?
I think what the reporting is going to show and the policies we have in this housing element is we need to be able to demonstrate that we're working to get that housing, we're working and communicating with the developers. All of the things that are under our control, we need to be able to demonstrate that we're doing that piece. Because I, I agree, these are large numbers. Is any city in the Bay Area going to meet its RENA? I don't know. I mean, it, it is difficult to know, but I do know we have to get the framework in place to enable it if the market's there to build that housing.
I, I know you mentioned earlier and before to me that the developers want to build townhomes now, right? Because. Because the rental housing makes no financial sense. The townhomes, they can at least make some money on by selling them. How many townhomes are in this housing element?
Townhome density, so that would be like the 20 to 35 category. I can't remember if we have. There's more than that. Anyway, I think that, I think it's in the teens. We don't, and we also have, when we get to zoning, we've, we're creating what's called a townhome combining district. On the theory that like the 1655 De Enza project you saw earlier, you'll have a component of townhomes and a higher density building. So you're probably going to get a number of sites will have a higher than a townhome density averaged over the site, but could include townhomes. For instance, even the latest Valco revision included townhomes adjacent to single-family. Westport is an obvious candidate, but, you know. But in conversations, yeah, developers right now, the sweet spot in the market is that townhome density.
Okay, my next question is HE-3.3.1 about using BMR money to rehabilitate owner-occupied housing. Are we doing that now? I mean, I would think we want to use our limited BMR money to actually build BMR housing and not settle lawsuits or give money to property owners.
Well, you have the latitude to use BMR funds for preservation, creation of new affordable housing, really anything that is either maintaining, enhancing, or adding additional BMR units. So, you know, those policies are not locking us into doing any specific thing. But the BMR manual, as it's currently written, allows a range of things to either create or preserve.
Okay, but I mean, this strategy doesn't even say that that BMR money would have to go to rehabilitate BMR housing. It just says owner-occupied housing.
Okay, you said this is 3.32.
3.3.1.
Point one, oh.
I mean, yeah, it's one thing if, you know, I mean, there's already organizations in the area that help income-limited residents to fix up their housing, which is great, but this says nothing. It just says you can use that money to rehabilitate owner-occupied housing without ever saying that it, you know, the resident has to be somehow income-limited. But as you say, we can't change anything. This is the way it's written, however badly it is. And let's see, the last thing I had was, I mean, I think, you know, there's been numerous studies about rent stabilization and tenant protection and Strategy 3.3.6 to study this. Well, I've studied Mountain View. They lost, since they adopted their rent control ordinance, they've had over 1,000 naturally affordable apartments converted to for-sale townhouses at, you know, million-dollar-plus with a small percentage of BMR. But, I mean, every study on the subject shows that rent control ends up displacing people and driving up the average rent price. So I don't know, you know, I would hope that we do not adopt this strategy because, you know, it sounds good on the surface if you don't look at the big picture. But, you know, the rent stabilization always ends up hurting the tenants. Let's see, was there anything else? I think we should set our impact fees at 100% of the level determined by Nexus studies. There's already legislation coming in the legislature to reduce our impact fees, which means we would subsidize them out of our general fund. And we all know what the situation of Cupertino is financially in terms of having to give more of our general fund money to developers to subsidize their impact fees. I think that's a terrible idea. And, yeah, as I think David mentioned about the money, I think we should request that the state fund our BMR requirements. It will cost us about $660,000 per unit to subsidize the developers. And, yeah, I think the state should willingly provide all that money to us because I don't think we have it. And I think that's all I have. Thank you. Should I go? Did you have any other comments? Okay.
I'll comment over the time of boarding.
Yeah. So I had a bunch of comments. I think there's actually been a lot of really great input here. I will start small. Love your canopy thing. I think that that was really, I guess Cupertino, you know, if you're all orchards, it's not surprising that you're not all, you know, mature trees when it turns into housing. So, you know, hopefully we can work on that because it really, it's very different being here than Palo Alto or even, you know, Campbell or Willow Glen. And it doesn't have to be that way. So I think that's great. I think there was a question about parkland dedication. So I don't know, it almost seems like the rule is if you, if you can't get run down by a car when you're on the structure, then it must be, must be a park, right? The sidewalks count, you know? But, but actually, so, so I'm actually going to, but, you know, more seriously, I actually, I'm probably on the, on the other side of that. You know, the parkland dedication we have is set, it's very, very much a suburban target. So I think that, you know, as we look at what we're trying to do, what we're trying to do if we're changing the trajectory in the future, then you really need to look at some other things. I would actually encourage, so one of the problems is the cost of the land is so high. And this is true of both the parking discussion and the parkland dedication discussion. The cost of park is so high that what you get, I mean, you know, people probably love to go have their lunch at the little park at Main Street. But, you know, that land was 15 million bucks an acre or whatever it is. So that, that little tiny park really costs a lot for that little tiny thing. So the first thing I would say is Cupertino is very fortunate. We're surrounded by a lot of open space that just doesn't happen to be part of the town. So if there are ways to work on, how do you make a deal with the county? How do you make a deal with, you know, MidPen? You know, I was on the board of Deer Hollow Farm for a long time. We were very, very fortunate to be next to, you know, Rancho San Antonio. We don't count that as open space, but it's pretty accessible for, you know, at Deer Hollow Farm, we have a program where there's a educational program there and a lot of kids are, are, you know, kind of coming on buses to come and spend some time on the farm. They come from a long way away. And so we're lucky that it's not, that we're not a long way away. So let's try to figure out if we can make a deal. It's difficult sometimes to do that. I think that we had, we had a lot of outreach from the county to support what we were trying to do. So I hope that that's something, you know, those sorts of directions. We, one place, one way to go, partner with the people around us. Another way to go would be, particularly now as the economy is, the city's budget is much tighter, to try to have, and I know this has come up before, but try to identify things that would normally be capital plan projects and that'll give people an opportunity to contribute to those. So we'll probably never build the swimming pool that people want to have if we actually have to do this and pass a bond and all that kind of thing. But if you get all these people who are trying to build homes here and there's an opportunity for them to, you know, contribute into a fund like that, if there's a way to do that, you know, to make that happen, I think that that really, that will make those things happen. And so, you know, I think that that really is literally the cost of land and the fact that there's very little of it. I mean, you know, if we were, you know, if we were, you know, California City farther in, you know, by Sacramento or something, you have much more opportunity to say, I will use this money. If I can't build into my project, I will use this money to annex, you know, additional land, you know, open space into the, into the city. But we don't have those, we don't have those options. There were a number of comments here about, about, you know, can we look at including some policies into, into the housing element? So one of them was around, you know, wage standards, worker employer wage standards. And the other one that the Commissioner Scharf mentioned was, was about things like reducing or getting rid of the BMR requirements on retail. I don't know that I would say that those rise to a level that we want. I think that, you know, I personally believe, you know, as I kind of said earlier, nothing, nothing will be perfect. And, and so on balance, I mean, you know, it's probably no surprise. I'm, I'm supportive of trying to go forward with the recommendation we have today. And I, and I think I would like to really avoid an additional kind of de novo review of the, of what's come here because, you know, we, the benefit to the city, there's very little benefit at this point relative to, to kind of going with something that's pretty close. Although I, I really do, you know, some of these things do seem a little, little kooky. You know, the, you know, the recommendation, the recommendation on, you know, on parkland or reductions of, of, you know, of mitigation fees. You know, I'm not sure that those are great, those are great things without being thoughtful. I did have, I did have a question in the, in the document. Back in the old days when we were going through the last, I went, this is on page 32 of the packet. And this is, this is a document, it's a, it's a chart, LU2, the community forum diagram, one that was subject to so much discussion in the past. So in general, in general, I'm kind of surprised it's not more different than it is, than it is here. I don't have too many issues with this other than how the heck am I supposed to read the Valco Shopping District Special Area? Are you in that block, in the side block off to the right? It's the lower right corner. Is that supposed to be three different possibilities? Okay.
It's not really three different possibilities, but it sort of references you to Figure LU4, which is the following figure in that packet, which identifies where each of those things are.
Yeah, I was going to ask, that was my next question actually, because that was really, that was really not very clear. So, so I think because it's the only one on here which had multiple alternate usages, I think, don't change the content, but graphically, I would try to improve that so that it's clear that there's, there's three things there. Otherwise, it kind of looks like somehow regional shopping can be, you know, regional shopping could have, you know, this high maximum residential density, which didn't make sense. And then, and then I got to say the LU4, that also didn't make sense to me, is the the gray, the gray section here, which I think is the kind of, is that supposed to be, there's a gray section in the upper left-hand corner. Is that the area where the? The teacher housing, yeah. Okay. Yeah, yeah. So, okay, I just, that's what I thought that was. And that's the only, that's the only area that was going to have that level of density. All right, okay.
Right, that's the only APM that's identified as a priority housing.
Okay, great. Let's see. Oh, so I guess, I guess I started talking about this, I don't know if I finished. So if we don't include something like, if something like worker pay or, you know, or the BMR on retail in the housing element, that doesn't preclude, I don't know, to what extent? So for instance, there's no, there's no statement in the, in the document today about, about prevailing wage or worker pay that doesn't prevent a policy, a standalone policy being passed. All right, so that, that's an issue. Again, it's an issue that I think, I'm glad somebody brought it up. I'm not sure that I think that it, that it would justify a change in this draft. But it also sounds like that's not precluded. Now, it's possible that the BMR level being charged on some of that, maybe that is precluded if it's, if it's explicit in the, in the document. So, you know, again, these are, these are things where I think in both those cases, they are worthy on their own of a community discussion. So, you know, so I'm glad they're highlighted. I would mark those downs as things that were raised. But I, you know, I personally wouldn't, wouldn't make a change on that. On, on the yield of, of, of housing, I think that the, the yield in, in the fifth Rena was, was not great. But I think the, you know, a big part of that really is, you know, what happened with Valco. Had, had Valco moved forward, not necessarily with the, you know, not necessarily with the project that, you know, that actually is approved now. But had there been a better discussion coming into that, you know, I think we certainly could have seen units built. We probably could have exceeded the, we could have exceeded the Rena number, although maybe not the, you know, not the targets by income. You know, I think there were certainly discussions that the Valco general plan was, was one that was, you know, 20%. 20% project. Again, overall, I think better for the community. But that's okay. I mean, that's, that's what, it is, it is what it is. The last thing I, and maybe this is in the same territory. The last thing I wanted to talk about was in, in in the current San Jose general plan, so what they call a vision, San Jose, there was a concerted effort to try to focus on exactly the kinds of, you know, how do you, how do you move to vehicle miles traveled? How do you go to higher density in the downtown core? You know, I think that I kind of, I knew Michael Rio a bit, who was, who was working, you know, was instrumental in that. And I think that one of the things that he had commented to, to me once was, the tough part is that, you know, from a, you know, transit view, from a fuel economy view, from all those, you know, ecological view, all those things favor high density. But the problem is only a few, you know, very limited the number of people who can build, you know, who can build 20, 20 and 30-story buildings. And so I think that one of the things that, that he had mentioned was that in, in San Jose, the most common kind of building they had there were sixplexes. And what happened was that that was what they, one of the things that was targeted was to not have sixplexes and more and more sprawl. And that, so that the shift was to have these units in, in high density, downplay the smaller ones. And in that respect, you know, that kind of backfired because, you know, then the economy changes and nobody can afford to build the giant tall building anymore. And then you've got a hole because the people who can build, who would have built, who would have kept building the sixplexes, they can't do that now either. So that actually is very, very similar to the discussion we've had here around the corner housing. I'm actually a supporter for it. I think that, that was actually a great example. Again, a similar example of the, the houses across from, from Lawson. You know, you wouldn't know, you wouldn't know they're, that they're duplexes unless you had some reason to go up to the doors. For the people who live there, I'm sure they're really happy that those, those units exist. And I think the only thing that's unfortunate in our, in our plan now, the corner lots is a good move. It wouldn't let you build what's working there very well. So I, I don't know, that actually may turn out to be an R2 area. So if it is R2, then, then, then planning really can save the day here. But I think that, you know, with, maybe with a cautionary tale a little bit of, of what happened in San Jose, I would definitely say, I actually think this housing element is great because there is a balance of, you know, there is a balance of, you know, focusing on building higher density along transit corridors, you know, very sound thinking. That is balanced, actually, you know, our land is, must be over 90% R1. And there, and there were some moves there, you know, the ADU moves and this, and this change as well, which make it possible to, to have some alternatives. And, and those may be alternatives that really do get, you know, that really do get built. So, you know, I think that's it for my comments. I appreciate the work and the effort that's gone into this. And I think that, I think this is a better document than, than Draft 1, so. It's great. That's it for me.
Yeah, I just want to add a quick comment. So for the, for the heat deserts or the, the lack of a canopy, lack of a canopy, one possible remediation that we could, that I could suggest is, some cities have adopted a ten-year canopy plan, similar to a bike bed plan, for example, but it's a canopy plan with significant success, so maybe that's something we can look at, is if we're gonna do that, then let's, let's look at developing and adopting a canopy plan that will help us rebuild our canopy and, you know, and mitigate some of the potential impact of the reduced parkland fees.
Any other comments? All right, do we want to take a motion at this time?
No, no, I'm not.
It's a really long one.
I know, I'm not ready, all right.
I think we should say, yeah.
All right, the planning commission, so I move that the planning commission recommends that the city council approve the general plan amendment in substantially similar form to the draft resolution attached hereto as exhibit G P A, is that right?
Yes, with the modification regarding that one A P N that I.
Right, with the modification of the one A P N at dish dash.
Yes, the addition dash side A P N three five nine zero eight zero two nine be removed.
Got it, what she said.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, we can, we can have discussion, if people would like to discuss this further.
Nope.
So I do agree with David that nothing will be perfect, and, you know, if this were only slightly flawed, I would hold my nose and vote for it, but in my view, it's just too severely slop, too severely flawed, as David mentioned, too kooky, so that's my position.
So, first of all, I'd like to thank the staff, you know, for working through this, and also, you know, being very patient and reaching out, you know, to answer any questions and all that, so I appreciate, you know, Pew and Luke and Mike and the team, but my biggest concern is, you know, between what we reviewed last time versus, you know, what we are voting on now, you know, the significant changes, right, the numbers changed, everything changed, and, you know, and, and we didn't have meetings, you know, to invite public input, you know, during this time, we did have significant amount of meetings, you know, prior to draft one, and after that, you know, almost, you know, the things have changed, you know, upside down, and, you know, without any public input, that's a part that I'm struggling with, so, yeah, so.
Yeah, I would comment to that end as well, I, I don't, I don't think there is a problem, I don't think there's a technical problem with the way that we, that we had, you know, the, you know, meetings or public, a public review of this, of this item, but given the, given the way that things were changing along the way, I think it probably would have been beneficial had there been the opportunity to do that, so that people could kind of know, I think the great, you know, one of the things that's really good about this, you know, when this thousand-page proposal appears, it does take some time to, you know, to go through, to look at, sorry, so first of all, I, we had discussed this in the agenda setting meeting, I appreciate the efforts to, you know, the way the packet was constructed so that it was possible to see where the changes were, I also appreciate the addition, for those of you who didn't know, there's a footnote in there which points to all historical documents, thank you very much for adding that, if you want to go back and, and do it in greater depth, so, yeah, you know, I, again, I think, I think there was a, a good, I think there were, there were good things driving it, it would have been, it would have been nice to have a little bit more public participation so that it isn't, you know, the, the trends of the things that changed, say, over the last five months, were more visible to people, more visible to people today.
I concur completely with that, it would have been really nice to have a few more check-ins in the last year and nine months, since the last time the planning commission looked at this, and, and, you know, to give a formal voice to the public, to be able to come up and speak versus, you know, reviewing documents that are posted online, I think that, and, and we've talked about this, right, and, and I understand the pressure you guys were under and, and just the tremendous, you know, just pressure from H C D and the state to get this done, so, there's no easy solutions, but, but I think the, the, just because H C D does not, did not require community feedback, it may not have been the right call to be like, oh, okay, they don't require, therefore, we're not gonna do it, I think it would have been helpful to, just to continue to get buy-in from the community to, to continue those outreach efforts and to give us as the planning commission and the public the opportunity to provide feedback and do steady sessions along the way, so, yeah, I mean, it's a really complicated document, there's a lot in there, you're never gonna get full agreement, we could keep talking about this for the next ten years, I guarantee we will never get to full agreement, so, you know, I, I get it, at some point, we have to cut it off and be like, okay, we, now we just need to lock this down, but it touches so much of our lives for the next ten years that I think some, some more outreach would have been, I think, really beneficial, just to bring the community together. That being said, I do want to congratulate you guys for the incredibly hard, long, I'm sure it's been a very long two years, so, and this is a really good document, very thorough, very detailed, very thoughtful, so want to give you guys kudos for that.
Guess I would concur with more or less what everyone said, this was a challenge, but to, to try to get through and to try to even come up with some coherent, simple questions to ask, because it's just, there's, it's way too much to try to inhale in such a short period of time, but I think we all understood and we, we should be cognizant of the fact that you guys are up against a deadline, and our purpose here is not to stop progress, especially when we know what that could possibly lead to, I think it would be, what the right, I'm not sure what the right word is, but it behooves us to do the right thing, and to help this move along, because the, the alternate is somewhat embarrassing, and I, I just don't want, want to be a part of that, I think we should be, you know, helping progress here, so, thank you for, you know, all the answering of all the questions that we've had tonight, and hopefully we can get this to actually get approved.
Great, I think it's time for us to vote. Please press your button.
Motion carries with Maripatla and Sharf voting no.
Great, well, this is a special meeting, we don't have the normal items at the end, so it is nine twenty-three, and I will adjourn this meeting.